I want to welcome everyone to the work session for the November 20th, 2012 Board of Commissioners meeting. In the work session, we have three items on the agenda. The first is a discuss enforcement requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act regarding the resealing, restriping of commercial parking lots. Mr. Fetterman?
I'll defer to Commissioner Waltrip. This is his request.
Yes, thank you. Frank Melton has talked with a number of people in the community about issues involving the restriping of parking lots in the city and the county, actually. And when the lots are restripped, it's his belief that they're not ADA compliant on the restriping a lot of times. And I believe he's talked with, obvious more than just me, on the commission. But I thought it'd be good to let Frank come and explain his position, what research he's done. And then I've asked Gene over the last several months, Gene has actually done some research on this, too. But just go ahead and get this out. And Frank, if you'll just come forward and state your name and your address.
I'm Frank Melton, and I live in 3688 Watermill Avenue in Fieldstone Farms in Bowling Green. The city is the main one who has all the businesses within the city, and so that's why I've come here to talk to you. I believe that they're not marked off according to the ADA standards in a lot of cases, most cases, I'll say. And my wife has Parkinson's disease, and she has a hard time getting in and out of the car if I'm not helping her. And if you don't have those access aisles that the ADA law has, well, then I can't get in there with her walker, or somebody couldn't get in there with a wheelchair and help her. And if you see her walking down the street, you think she walks pretty good. But when she is getting in and out of a car, or turning, or doing something like that, she doesn't have good balance. She falls about four times a day, just in the normal course of things. And they're not all because of handicap parking, but I'm just saying that this, that's why it's an extra strain, taking care of someone like that if it's not marked off properly. I've handed out some sheets there. One's about the ADA law. I want to point out that it's part of the civil rights law. And I know that there's not anywhere near this much discussion about the other parts of the civil rights law. They're enforced more easily than handicap parking. And I think that the handicap parking should be enforced the same way that the other parts of the civil rights law are. It's under Department of Justice, the civil rights law, and it's because of people needing equal access to buildings, any business, it's included in businesses. Let me just go through a few things here. The second page points out that the handicap parking should be the closest to the nearest accessible entrance. The parking spaces should be at least 96 inches wide and have an adjacent access aisle 60 inches wide. Now, that means you can have two with an access aisle between them, but you can't have three lined up side by side. In some cases in Bowling Green, there are three lined up side by side, and so there's no access aisle. In other cases, they're made the same width as the normal parking spaces, and people just put insignia for handicap parking there. And that's really not a handicap parking space, and there's not the access that you would have with the aisles there. And then the third, well, fourth page, I guess, third or fourth page, I have some things about the restriping of parking lots is covered under the ADA law. And this is a business brief, October 2001, actually. It says, "When a business restripes a parking lot, it must provide accessible parking spaces as required by the ADA standards for accessible design." And it says must, and that usually, that means that that's the law. There's the ADA business brief that you can search for on ada.gov, and then it shows a diagram of how you can have two places with one access aisle between them. And each place has to have a van accessible. Now, there's also people who have signage for van accessible, and it's really not the correct width of the access aisle for a van to put a ramp down. And that's another case of what is happening in Bowling Green. Another thing, under restriping, where I have Page 1 of 5, ADA Design Guide, it says, "When business, state, or local government agency, or other covered entity restripes the parking lot, it must provide accessible parking spaces as required by ADA standards." And it says, "Any business or privately owned facilities that provides goods or services to the public." So, I've heard some people say, "Well, you don't, it doesn't include businesses." Well, it does include businesses, too. On over, well, let's see, that's, it's supposed to be on level ground, too, by the way, so you can not go too fast down the, down a slope from a handicap parking space to the door. Then over, next thing I have clipped together is about the legal framework of handicap parking in Kentucky, and the handicap parking abuse. They have laws against the abuse and policy solutions for Kentucky. And it says that, in the second part of the first sentence there, that the laws exist on the federal, state, and local levels. So, they all are supposed to be controlling handicap parking and putting in the proper parking. Then the handicap parking regulation began in the 60s through programs adopted by the state and local levels. Now, I know Kentucky has adopted it. And then it's, another on down the middle of that page, it says they allocate, the handicap parking laws are complex, and they allocate responsibility among the three levels of government. Then I put in something here about Louisville Metro Suite for Access. That's a group that is in Louisville that advocates for handicap parking. And it mentions the 1990 Americans with Disabilities Act. So, that's 22 years old now. And then the Civil Rights Act, Kentucky Civil Rights Act, also requires businesses to obey the federal ADA. The last thing I have is about the Kentucky Health Notes. It's in the last clipped area. And I have some statistics for Warren County there. But when people fall, they, a lot of times, break hips. And so, if people break hips, there's a high percentage of them die within a year. And getting in and out of a car is one of the most likely places where they would break a hip and fall. It's hard sometimes with the way she gets out of the car for me to hold her even, but I need to do that. I'm trying to do that. But it would make it a lot easier if we could get the access aisles in it by every parking place, and we could have the things marked off right, and up near the doors and everything. It wouldn't be as likely, at least. But she just had an aunt that died within three months after breaking a hip. And it's partly because of different, it wasn't because she fell in a handicap parking place. But still, it just shows you the incidence of breaking hips and dying because of different things. It just complicates your other health care. You both take other medicines. It complicates your other health care. It also is a drain on the city government, too, because the city, I know, helps the hospital out. And there's a lot of hospital time when people fall, and a lot of rehab time. And so, I believe the expense, if you're going to look at it purely from an economics point of view, the expense would be greater than the cost of getting people to put in their parking the way they should. Let's see, there's one thing I missed in here about the building codes enforcement, and that is part of the Kentucky, it's in this part about the legal framework of handicap parking from, and handicap parking abuse. Well, the next page over there, in the middle of that page, it talks about the enforcement and penalties in Kentucky. And it says, "Department of Public Protection, Division of Building Codes Enforcement is the one who was making these rules." But then it says, down at the bottom, it says, "According to the Director of Kentucky Division of Building Codes Enforcement, in new construction and modifications to existing structures that trigger compliance with federal ADA laws, it's the building official's responsibility to ensure compliance with accessible parking and signage requirement before issuing the certificate of occupancy." And I know that that hasn't been done around here, because they wouldn't have so many, and I'd say most, but if they wouldn't have so many that are not in compliance with the ADA law.
Now, Frank, that's, that's, that's when they initially construct the parking lot, right?
Well, yes, that's right.
That's not repaving or restriping, that's the initial.
That's the initial one, yeah. But, see, the thing is, in Kentucky, and everywhere, the restriping doesn't necessarily mean you don't have to follow the law anymore. So, it really doesn't make any difference whether it's restriped, or whether it's a new building or being remodeled.
I guess my point is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, before they get the certificate of occupancy, there would be some inspections.
That's right.
On the city level.
You're right. This is the new construction.
Right.
And then the other part that I looked at first was about the restriping, and how that doesn't make any difference about, that doesn't mean you can do away with the ADA restrictions because of restriping. And really, I was looking at this in a broader term than just the restriping, like you mentioned at first. But, see, there's a lot of places that shouldn't have even had a certificate of occupancy that are relatively new. I think that's all I had. Does anybody have any questions besides that?
I can follow up just on something you said. I believe the next sentence after what you read addresses who would enforce it, because it says, "After the certificate of occupancy is issued, it would be the Department of Justice or local law enforcement, depending on what the violation is."
Yes, that's right.
So, I think there's a, I think there's a, an implied continuation, that you can't just pay the parking lot.
Yeah.
And no longer comply, and that there is at least two agencies that are responsible for enforcing that.
Yeah. Another point is that you just don't not check that before certificate of occupancy. And now that we have a whole bunch of people that are not in compliance, I don't see how we can say, "Well, we're not responsible anymore because we've already given a certificate of occupancy."
I think we're talking about the, I think we're talking about the same thing. After, if it is restriped or repaved, then I think what we're saying is that it should still meet the ADA requirements.
Yes.
And that's what you're saying, yes.
And I believe here, it says, "The Department of Justice or local law enforcement is who's responsible for enforcing it, depending on what the violation is, because the certificate of occupancy has been issued."
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if it was issued 10 days ago or 10 years ago. Once it's issued, it talks about the two agencies that are responsible for enforcement.
Yeah. And really, Kentucky is, too, because it says in another place that the three levels of government are responsible for it.
And the law enforcement part of it is if someone parks in a handicap, that's, that would be a traffic issue if someone illegally parks without the sticker. Not, again, not necessarily that they did not stripe it appropriately. That would not be a law enforcement function.
Yeah, well, I understand, yes.
It says, "Depending on what the violation is."
Yeah. Well, there's some of the abuse by people like that, too. And I know there's abuse by people with handicap tags that are, a younger person's driving an older person's car, too. But I think those are magnified and out of proportion, because the big thing I see is the lack of code enforcement.
Okay. Now, do they may have any questions for Frank, more before Gene? What I wanted to do is have Gene talk about what he found on the issue, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Melton, obviously, he and I have talked a few times, particularly, I think, by email. And I know some of his issues, I think I forwarded through, and Kevin has worked through to try to get some of them resolved as well. I think the main issue here is, or two or three different issues. I think that we do, under Kentucky Building Code, he's right, we have jurisdiction to ensure that when new items are built, they're built in compliance with the Building Code. And I think the Building Code does pick up parking requirements as well. If there are specific instances where we issued a certificate of occupancy that we shouldn't have, I'm not aware of those, so I'm not, you know, I really can't address those. I think the main thing that we looked at, and Brent also did some research on this, too, particularly the parking requirements. The main issue, I think, that we looked at was, you know, after that certificate of occupancy has been issued, at that point, our Building Code people are out of the picture. They're not involved anymore. You know, they've issued certificate of occupancy, that building is in place. Hopefully, it was building compliance with the Building Code. We inspected it, and the parking lot was okay. But then what happens five years down the road, if they restripe it, or if they repave and restripe? You know, right now, we don't have anything in our code of ordinances that require those people to come to us to get any kind of a permit. We don't permit repaving, we don't permit restriping. So, we're not out there looking to see if they do that. I also have questions whether we have language in our code of ordinances that would give us the authority to do that anyway. Not saying that we can't, as a home rural city, we probably could adopt some type of ordinance requiring a permitting process and all that kind of stuff. If you wanted to do that, we probably could do that. If I'm not mistaken, I think Louisville may have an ordinance somewhere along that line that requires permits for repaving and restriping. But that still doesn't get around the issue, and Mr. Melton is right, there are other agencies out there that have the responsibility. It is an ADA violation for businesses to restripe, to repave and to restripe without complying with the ADA parking requirements. He's right, that is a violation. The only question is, who goes out there and enforces that and looks for it? Again, right now, I don't think we have, ordinance language allows us to do it, but there are remedies out there. I think he can probably file a complaint with Kentucky, with our local Human Rights Commission, who can help him pursue an ADA complaint. There's also possibilities of filing complaints with the Federal Department of Justice. If you recall, we had one filed against an issue here not too long ago involving a denial from the Board of Adjustments on a particular use in an area. That unsuccessful applicant filed a complaint with the Department of Justice. We ended up getting a favorable decision, but they followed that route. And there's also a state ADA office that can handle complaints involving parking and restriping and repaving without complying with the ADA as well here, too. And I'm not sure if Mr. Melton's been provided that name, but I do have, his name is Mr. Ryan, R-Y-A-N. He's the State ADA Coordinator. And if you want, I'll give you, I'll make a copy of, in fact, I'll give you this if you want. I've got his phone numbers, I think, well, I got two phone numbers. I got his cell, his email address, and anything else. But he's the State ADA Coordinator. Said he can also take complaints involving restriping, repaving, compliance with parking under the ADA. So, there are avenues out there to pursue complaints. It's just our question is, are we the appropriate entity to do that? Right now, I think, given our language, or maybe our lack of language in our code of ordinances, it's probably not us that those complaints need to go to. They need to go, again, probably three places. Again, the Human Rights Commission, the State ADA Coordinator, or with the Federal Justice Department. Again, if we want more, we can, I think we can do it. But there are, you know, there are avenues out there already.
Well, some of the things I read in those papers was that the city, the county, and the state, and the federal government all have responsibility. And so, to me, the city has responsibility just as much as the ADA. And I think it would be embarrassing to the city to have complaints go up there about Bowling Green, you know, and here, we could be solved easily right here.
Well, let me, if I can, I'll read to you the response I got from Mr. Ryan, because I asked him that question as well. He says, "You are correct. The striping of accessible parking locations is an ADA issue. At this point, cities or counties are not responsible," he said, "are not responsible, "for the enforcement of the ADA regulations. A complaint can be filed with his office or the Department of Justice." So, he's basically saying, you know, unless we did more, and, you know, we could do more, unless we did more, right now, the enforcement provisions are elsewhere.
Well, I don't see how you can say that when the ADA law says that all agencies are responsible. And the Kentucky adoption says that all agencies are responsible, that this, all levels of government are responsible for the enforcement.
Well, but I agree, we're, again, we're only enforceable and responsible for enforcement of those things that we have jurisdiction to do. Clearly, we have jurisdiction when we issue a building permit to pick it up at that point. But once we issue the certificate of occupancy, our building inspector is no longer, I mean, I think, to me, I think they lose their ability now to go out and enforce something beyond that. We do have code enforcement, but we, on our code enforcement, do the International Property Maintenance Code. That code does not pick up parking lots and ADA accessibility issues. So, again, for us, I think for the city to get involved in enforcing this, I think it's going to require more from the city commission to do that. We're going to have to change our ordinance, setting out what standards we're going to enforce, setting out of some, because right now, we don't have a permitting process to know when people do this. You know, we'd have to have people going around and trying to, you know, make sure that people come to us and let us know they're doing it, for us to go out and do the inspections. Right now, we don't have anything on the books that lets anybody here at the city knows that people are paving or restriping parking lots.
Well, I know, but you don't give, you don't, the city does not give excuses for not enforcing the other parts of the Department of Justice Civil Rights Act. They don't just do away with the race relations. They don't do away with the country of origin. They don't do away with the other parts of the Civil Rights Act because of something the city doesn't do.
Yeah, but I also, I mean, I'm not sure you want to go that way, because while the application of those statutes are applicable to the city, when we hire and do stuff like that, the city as a body, we do not go out and enforce, for example, Title VII of the Kentucky Human Rights Commission laws and regulations about employment discrimination. As a city, we don't enforce those against private companies either.
Could I, could I interject something right here? And Brent, can you, since you've looked at this, may I ask you a question? Frank, I'm...
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
What did you, in your research, what did you find out? Anything to add to the conversation?
I will add some clarification. First, I do want to say that I am sympathetic to Mr. Melton's situation. I had a grandfather with Parkinson's, so I do understand the difficulty in handling that. But moving forward to the topic on the table, the city of Bowling Green does not enforce ADA through its building code currently. Okay? We enforce ANZI. And you should have a copy of Chapter 5 in front of you of ANZI. We call it ANZI. It's the American National Standards Institute, and that is the accessibility guideline. If you go back through ADA, it was adopted in 1990. The original regulations or standards were written in 91. It was not updated till 2010. So, you've got 20 years. Building code is updated every three years, so you have much higher frequency of turnover for new technologies, changes in the environment, things like that. So, we enforce ANZI through the building code process. Now, saying that, ANZI and ADA are parallel. If you look at one on space requirements, number of spaces, things like that, they're the same. But they are not the same code, they are not the same law. So, I do want to make that clarification. And in going through this, reading the building code, reading ADA, and to speak to Mr. Melton's point on the responsibility, ADA covers two groups. There's Title II and Title III groups. Title II groups would be states, local governments, cities, counties, and even our agents, libraries, extension offices, things like that. They're kind of separated. And we have a responsibility to ensure that our buildings, our facilities, our parking lots do meet ADA requirements. And, you know, we make sure that those things are met. And Title III groups are private businesses. They are merchants. They are retail establishments. They're stadiums. You know, they're types of places of congregation. So, you really kind of have two different groups there. So, I agree that we do have a responsibility through the building code process and our enforcement of ANZI, but also to make sure that our facilities, our sidewalks, our roadways are ADA compliant. So, the responsibility is there on two sides for us.
And before we issue any certificate of occupancy, that's a check off that that is done?
That starts at the plan review stage. When building permits come in, the actual applications come in, and plans are submitted, and we're actually just looking at lines on paper, nothing physical, just lines on paper, that is done. And that has been a priority of ours for the last several years, and making sure that those standards are met. And as part of ADA, the parking is just a very small part of it. ADA takes over the entire building, and it's much more than just this. But this is part of it. I can give you an example of whenever there we had a local business that was going to expand at the parking lot. They were pretty much going to add, say, 50 spots to the backside, and they weren't up by the building. But we still counted those 50 into their total to make sure that they had the handicap parking available up by the building. So, that kind of triggered the next point. Now, after we went out there and looked at it, they were fine. It all worked. All the numbers were there. But, so, we do look at this as it comes through at the plan review, and then through the actual inspection in the field, looking at the physical changes.
So, I'm sorry. Brent?
Yes, sir.
In this particular example, another parking lot, how did we get out there? Why did we go out there?
That's a paving permit. That is an actual physical construction. They're actually going out there, removing the topsoil, putting down the gravel base, bringing in asphalt, paving that, and striping it. That is an actual physical construction project. Whenever Gene uses the term repaving, it's resealing, just like you would reseal your driveway. You do that every couple of years. You go in, they put the top coat on, come back a couple of years later, they reseal. That's just part of maintenance. And that is not covered under the building code process. Now, does the business have a requirement under ADA to make sure that they have accessible spots? Yes. I agree with Mr. Melton on that completely. They do have that requirement. However, my position is in line with Gene's, that we do not have the authority to enforce that requirement, that that is a federal law established by Congress, and the authority is given to the U.S. Department of Justice.
And so, Fireview Plaza, Greenwood Mall, we have no responsibility on how many spaces they have unless it's construction.
Correct.
New construction.
If Greenwood Mall decides we're going to reseal our entire parking lot and restripe, and we're going to kind of change the angles, you know, change some of the sizes, there's nothing in our process that triggers that. Now, if Greenwood Mall decides we need 200 more parking spots, we're going to buy four acres of ground over here and push out, then we do become a part of the process. So, there is a difference there. Yes, Commissioner.
May I, Jeff?
Yeah, sure.
In new construction, we require a certain number of spaces.
Through the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Five years later, they want to paint their parking lot, not repave it, just paint it, restripe it. And they were, they were required to have 50 spaces, and they want to knock it down to 30.
Mm-hmm. That would be through the zoning ordinance, and that would still be on the parking requirement. But I do not believe, and Gene would have to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that that would then trigger, through the zoning ordinance, the ADA part, or our ability to enforce ADA.
Would we allow a building to be built today without an elevator or to be handicap accessible?
No.
If a building was already built and being repurposed, and they wanted to take out their elevator, or they wanted to allow it to take out their handicap accessibility, would we allow that?
No.
Then, then...
Unless they did it without a building permit.
Unless they did it without a building permit. So, my question is, if we're handling those issues on a local level, I'm with Mr. Melton. I don't know why we're not handling this on a local level. I mean, if we're, if we're not going to allow somebody to come into a building and say, you know, "The elevator really gets in the way of where I want to expand an office, so I'm going to take out the elevator," we wouldn't allow that to happen.
Mm-hmm.
It's, I do agree with him. It's in, it's in the same bailiwick. I mean, it's the same issue.
Right.
It's about handicap accessibility.
And I don't disagree with you. Other than, we would have a trigger point in there through the permit. Then we're involved.
I get, I get we don't have a trigger point.
Right.
Right now. But what I'm saying is, what, what can we do to have a trigger point?
Well, we can adopt ordinance language requiring a permitting process for restriping, repaving, resealing.
But that's the commission's, not my, I understand that. Yeah.
If I may, just one other question. Mr. Melton, one question for you that I failed to ask you. Have you taken steps to file complaints with the agencies that?
No.
Gene has talked about?
No. I haven't done that. I wanted to get the city to do it myself. I mean, I think it's a lot better if the city does it. You know, I can do that. But I've sent in information to the city about, I think to Mr. Harmon, and about the ones who are not compliant, and I think to you, too, a list, partial list, at least.
Right.
But I would just would like to see the city handle it here, rather than, because I would go to that other agency, but I can't, I don't see that I'd do much good if that person gave the opinion he gave when the law says something different. I think the law says that the city and the county are responsible, just like the state and the federal government are. And I don't see how something the city is not doing can negate the ADA law. And so, I just would ask you all to do something to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Melton, I had a question. Maybe you can, I don't know if it was answered clearly. Maybe it was. I might not have heard it. Are you asking the city to go back and to survey the whole, all the businesses in the communities and make a list of those businesses do not meet the ADA right now and make them correct it?
Well, I can, let me just say this. It's the people that are grandfathered in that are so old, if they're 20 years old or more, and they're grandfathered in, well, I can see why they wouldn't make theirs compliant, or they wouldn't have to. I'm saying the businesses that are younger than 20 years old should be compliant. I think if you didn't check the building code, I talked to the building code people one time, and they said that they mainly checked the number of spaces. That's the main thing they were interested in. And I think if a person, if the city has not enforced the building code in the last 20 years, and there really should have been enforced back then, I think that they should be. Now, I don't know of every time who's younger than 20 years old. But I just think that they should make it work the way it should have worked, and not say that we can't enforce it because we've already gone through the building code process. You know, I've sent a list of a lot of them. I've probably got about a list of 15 that are not in compliance, and then I know are younger than 20 years old. Now, if they're older than that, I can't see they have to be enforced, you know?
Would it be, if I may, would it be the right path to take to have someone on staff look into this? look into this, see what the, the issues, all the issues are, list them, talk with some of these repaving companies to see if, what their, what their ideas about this are, and then come back to us?
We certainly can do that, but I think we could lay out the decision-making issues now. Do you want to go back, as Mr. Melton suggests, and do somehow, do a survey of all of the properties in the community that are 20 years or younger, and force them to now put in the particular handicap accessible parking that is required pursuant to this, even though we didn't assume that responsibility? Or are we going to go forward from now on, make, using new construction, which I think is well-covered, but have a trigger point for repaving and restriping and going forward whenever that happens, we have permit, then make people abide? For example, the mall, if they would repave their whole parking lot, right? We would add a requirement going forward that they do that?
My initial thought was that the latter was to move forward.
Yeah, that's what I thought also.
With provisions, if we're going to enforce them, and if there are, if there are someone's, for instance, Mr. Melton, if he wants to file a complaint with the state agency and deal with those other people, then I think that would be fine. But on behalf of the city, if we did do this, I would say moving forward from whatever day it would be.
Practically, you would eventually catch up to everyone during that 20-year period. I don't know how long paving lasts, but maybe 20 years or less, that would catch that. Unless you want to have Brent go out and survey, find out 300 businesses that don't have the proper thing in the last 20 years, and now say to them...
That, that would not be mine, that would not be my initial intention. Of course, I'm only one of five, but that would not be my initial idea.
Well, I'd be happy with starting from here forward. And, and then some places, like, I, I know the mall, for example, repainted their lot within the last three or four years, and, and they are one that condensed down the handicap parking spots to three side by side, and you can't have any access to them.
Mr. Melton and I have quietly, privately worked on a few businesses together.
Yeah.
Not enforced, but create compliance, I guess the word is. But do we want to go forward, which I think we can do, create the trigger mechanism, and then eventually have the whole community over maybe a generation or so be compliant? Or create this Waterloo right now where everybody has to do that?
No, I think we ought to go forward from here rather than going back. I, I, I don't see how we could. I mean, where's the manpower going to come from in order to do these things? I mean, when you talk about blacktop, there's a whole lot of blacktop in Bowling Green, a whole lot of parking lots in Bowling Green, and...
We'll find the manpower to do it. It's not our burden of getting it, that survey. It is, do you want to save those businesses?
Well, it's twofold issues. I think Mr. Danning is correct in the amount of time it would take, but I think it's important that we apply by the law. But I do know from personal experience that the Human Rights Commission takes this information and addresses it. Now, I don't know why that part of the equation hasn't been really addressed by Mr. Melton, but that's their role to enforce the human rights portion. We set it up by ordinance to do that, and I know that, that they are probably short-staffed as well, but I do know that they have addressed those items in the past. I know from personal experience, so... But, you know, as far as starting, you know, a, a new role for city government, I'd, I'd want to study a little bit more how much its effort is going to take and the amount it's going to cost and, and going forward from that, but I guess we're looking for direction, so... Comments?
I, I, I think it's unfortunate that in the interest of small government, we're going to tell Mr. Melton and other disabled people in Bowling Green, we won't help them. I, 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 it, it's disheartening to me to think that we're going to do that. I think there's a way that we could do new construction going forward. If we, if we're going to, and, and I believe in code enforcement, everybody on this board knows that I do, but if we're going to measure how high somebody's grass is on their private property, but we're not going to measure the size of the parking spaces that elderly and disabled people use to go to the doctor, to get groceries, to, to do anything, it's, to me, to me, it's a failure of government. Whether it's big government or small government or whatever ideology we want to apply to it, it's, it's to me a failure. I think that it would be better if we did new construction going forward, and we did old construction by complaint-driven, much like we used to do the code enforcement. We used to do code enforcement by complaint-driven only. If somebody called in and said, "This parking lot," or, I'm sorry, "This, this particular lot doesn't have grass that's in compliance," then we would make a visit rather than having to go out and have staff that would survey. We would do it on a piecemeal approach and then notify those property owners that they're not in compliance. And then if we're not going to do that, I would at least like to see the city, maybe through Brent's office, have a place where Mr. Melton or others like him can come and, and make the complaint, bring forward on a local level what the issue is, and then we can contact Mr. Ryan at ADA and not put so much burden on the citizen to enforce public parking.
We do. It's called the Human Rights Commission, that, that's their role.
How successful has the Human Rights Commission been at this? I don't know.
I don't know that their focus has been on enforcing ADA, but we'll talk to their board members, I'm sure, but, but if, if the Human Rights Commission is not doing their job, I think it's important that we direct our attention to those board members rather than just take over their role and we set them up to do a certain, certain project.
But in all fairness, as far as the Human Rights Commission, how would they, how would they do it? They don't have no staff at all.
They did it before.
They did what?
They have before.
As far as the ADA and so?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say one other thing, too.
We're just managing, we're still going through up here.
Only, I, I wish that, that a complaint had been filed with one of the other agencies just to see how responsive they were, or non-responsive they were to a complaint like this. If they, if they buried it and never got to it, or if, if for some reason they didn't want to, want to deal with the issue, that would be one thing. Another thing would be if they actually did deal with it, then it seemed like that would be the appropriate route to take. That's the reason I think maybe having... No, again, I don't know what the wishes of the, of the board are.
Do you have comments? Joe, do you have any more comments?
No. What are we waiting for? A word is to... My thought process is, I would like for this right now to be the benchmark, and we, we go forward through our process, through permitting, or whatever we need to do through Brent's operation as far as the future is concerned. I, I don't know how...
The only component that I see that, that's missing in actually making the decision right now would be the, what the people who repave and restripe, what their thoughts are about this, and whether it makes any difference, I don't know, but I don't know what, I don't know if it's just something that, as Mr. Melton has said, there's some places obviously that have not been restripped appropriately. Is it just out of ignorance on the part of the repavers? Is it, is it that it's just not paid attention to? I would like to think that they just haven't paid attention to it as much as they should.
Billy, let me, let me ask this. What are you expecting from the pavers, Scotties, and the other people? I'm a little confused there, help me out.
Probably would just be the strippers, because the pavers don't generally stripe.
All right.
Pavers don't generally stripe, do they? Kind of say sub that out to others?
Well, yeah, you're right.
I guess what I'd be looking for, if they would be willing to, is why haven't they been striped back that would make the restriping in compliance with the original construction of the parking lot? And it would be, you know, if they just, and I don't know what the response would be. You know, if it would be that they just haven't paid any attention to it, but they start paying attention to it and do it that way, then we may not have to have these, another ordinance. But, but I also agree with, with much of what Slim said about that, I mean, it should be, it should be addressed, and we should be in compliance. I thought it was interesting what you said. My dad died in January, and he had broken, for the second time, he had broken a hip and then died. And getting out of car and all, and again, it probably didn't have anything to do with a handicap space. I didn't ask, I probably should have asked. If I'd known this, I would have asked. But again, this is, this is potentially serious.
I agree, something needs to be done, but before I commit that the city will implement new ordinances or implement new procedures for this, I'd like to see, will we have to increase staff? How much is that going to cost the city?
Are we talking about going back 20 years?
No.
I'm not.
I don't think anybody...
From here forward.
From here forward, so I think we can take that off the table.
What we're doing from here forward, though, now, are we not?
Well, a couple of issues if you...
We're not doing from here forward if they just repaint it?
Oh, or restripe, yeah. Okay. Couple of issues, if you want to draft ordinance, we've got, we've got to decide and talk about. One, I'm not sure anybody knows, maybe Brent's got a good idea, but it's already gone. Brent, sorry, Brent.
Hard to miss, the first time you made this. Big fellow with the beard.
How did I miss him?
Brad, what's his name?
Yeah, Brad, Larry, Joe.
I was looking for Brent, I was looking for Brent, Brad is standing there. Because I'm not just sure we know, you know, that one question may be a good one, if the striping companies could tell us, for example, how many in the city of Bowling Green they do every year? I don't know if they do 10 or, or 500. I, I have no idea how many they do, but, but if we do draft an ordinance, obviously you guys have got to give us some direction about cost. Are we going to charge for this? What kind of penalties do you want for companies that don't? Do you want criminal, you want to keep it code? I mean, stuff like, basic stuff like that, if you want it. It'd be easy enough to write a draft ordinance, we just need some directions about what you want to do. And then, you know, not to delay anything, but your question about how effective these other agencies have been, I don't know. What I know, what I've read and heard, the Federal Justice Department or Cabinet, or the way it's called, has been fairly active the last few years in ADA, where they include restriping and stuff, I don't know, but, but other aspects of ADA, they've been very, very active the last few years. So I wondered, not to delay anything, but, but kind of your question, I wondered if Mr. Ryan would be interested in coming back and maybe coming down here and addressing the board itself and answering some of your questions.
The purpose of the day was to, instead of Mr. Melton having to talk with us all individually, like, that's gone on for a good while, is to get it all out at one time, so all of us can hear the same thing. So I would not be opposed, what you insist.
I, I'm starting to see possibly the need for us to go back and see what the demand is. How much repaving, restriping occurs in a year? If it's 20 times, that's not a big burden. If it's 200 times, that's not a burden. So maybe we could delay this for a month, and we'll come back with some information, if that's okay with you all.
You can do it on the commission retreat or something?
Yeah. Is that all right with you all?
It's fine.
I'll, we'll interview them. My gut is that these strippers will say whatever the client wants.
Right.
But I don't know what the demand is. If it's 200, that would put a burden on staff. If it's 20, I don't think so.
Well, I think it'd be unfair to, to have an ordinance and not at least attempt to talk to the people who do the work.
Okay.
Mr. Melton?
I just want to comment that as a citizen, I, I think it's a waste for me to complain to the people in Washington or Frankfurt when the city could take care of it right here, and it would be done. If they would, I, I don't, can't see, because the city hasn't enforced the code enforcement part of the handicap parking, why should I waste the people's time up there? Because this is going to be going in circles. I mean, that's what I see.
We have a local, the Human Rights Commission is a local group that the city created.
Well, okay, but it's still redoing something the city should have done before. I, I mean, I can, I, I'll be happy with starting right here and going forward, but still, why complain about something, the way something is right now, when the city should have taken care of it already themselves by just the code enforcement, which I read in that ADA law?
Have you ever spoken with anybody at the Human Rights Commission? Did they give you any guidance?
No, no, because I, I don't, well, I can do that if you all want me to do that. You know, I'll be glad to do it.
I think Mr. DeFebo is going to look into some information for us, and I just was curious about the information, so...
And Bruce mentioned about having information to us. We have a January meeting to have that information to us, if that would be acceptable to everyone?
I think we could do it before, but we can, we can do it to January?
No, it doesn't, if you have it before, that'd be fine.
I'd like it before.
Okay.
Throwing it out there.
How about the second meeting, how about the second meeting in December?
We're, we're three meetings away from me not coming anymore, so I'd like to see it before.
You can always come as a citizen, so, you know?
It'd be me, Mr. Melton out there at the podium.
Anything else on ADA?
I appreciate Mr. Melton, and he's, he's, he's kept talking about this for a long time, and I appreciate you bringing it to us and at least giving us a chance to, within the next short period of time, having an answer for you.
I appreciate you all coming down here to talk with us.
All right, the next is the quarterly report for the downtown tax increment financing activities presented by the infamous Doug Gorman.
Are you, Mayor, may I ask a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Are you putting a time limit on this presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
I hope so. Thank you so much for having me come down. I'm here to talk about the golf courses, and I want, no, wait, I'm sorry, this is a bit...
This time is up.
Yeah. You've been here too long.
That's, that's right. Thank you. We just met Mr. Melton, so great, great job there, and, and what a great opportunity for people to express their opinion. I want to say something first off about my man in the back of the room, Officer Jared Petit, used to work for me many years ago, and that's where he learned to be everything he is today.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, his father's worked with me for the last 25 years, Mark Petit, and I'm very proud of Jared. He is a great, great addition to the police force here, and as, as, if that's, if that's what we have as police officers, we're in great shape here at City Bowling Green. So Jared, it's good to see you, buddy, and you knew I was going to call him out. Also, I'd like to point out something very quickly. Great job on the calendars, and I read through this, we've, Mr. DeFebo, $70,000 we're receiving donations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I, I thought tax dollars paid for everything we had. Do we have, okay, thanks, thank you to the citizens for donating to City Bowling Green.
We do collaborative projects with them.
My gosh, that's unbelievable. There's something that will not happen for me as a donation to the city, but I appreciate that. Okay, I'll get on to it, I just appreciate. Yes, thank you. Thank you, that's right. Well, make me wait 45 minutes, we're going to get, all right. What I, what I do want to give you some good news, and I'll keep this brief, though, about the tip, and just thank you so much for having me come down today, especially if I can figure out how this works. Sorry, I'm about to button right here, good. Here's an arrow button right here, that's good enough, I'm just gonna do that. Okay, here we are. We, a couple of things I want to update you at. As, this is actually of September 30th, we have not done the last quarter report, but as of that, we're at $155 million, and so, of course, our goal by the end of December of 2014 was to do $150 million of capital investment. We're at $155 million, so fully two years ahead of time on a six-year schedule, we'll have met that. So we have started the process to get state certified through the signature process. It is a complicated process. One of the things the state requires, which is fines, is a third-party audit, our books for, all of our entities have been audited each, each and every year, and now we have a third party that's going to go through that and audit all the expenses to make sure that the, the money spent is, is classified the right way, that they, they do pay for some things and don't pay for other things. Couple of recently completed projects, and some are under review, is the junior high residential, which is the Columns Project, and, and again, if you have not been up there, you're missing something. I talked with Mr. Schubert the other day, they're starting the last phase of that, and hope to have it up by August, which is the oldest building there, and they are starting that construction, which is unbelievable. that construction, which is unbelievable, and it's at 96% occupancy of the rooms they have available right now, so it's obviously been a great hit. And the Student Life Foundation, I've got a picture of the residential, that's a private organization, Student Life Foundation, that they have that wrap around the, at Alumni Square, we call it Block 12, but it's now called Alumni Square, and that wrap of student housing they did there, they, they did something interesting, they put those, they knew that would be for older students, seniors maybe, and grad students, those housing there, and they did an online auction for that because they had, had a whole lot of people interested, and those sold out in seven minutes online, so they're fully rented. So the projects are under, under construction, Hitsense Park Plaza, Block 6, that the city was very involved in, and I appreciate that more than you'll know, that, hopefully, the first tenants will be moved into there April 1st. There are some other announcements we'll be able to make here in the next two months, roughly sometime in January, about the rest of some other developments going into that, some other rental. Block 7, the Dollar General's finally cleared all of the hurdles they've had, they had to have some state right away and some other issues there with the Dollar General, and that's, that construction is getting ready to start back there behind the ballpark. BGMU Headquarters is moving along very well, the Alumni Center at Block 12, if you haven't been up there, too, it's going very well. They're just starting now the police headquarters and bookstore at, at Alumni Square, so that construction is now underway, and then again, at the end of the TIF, the Western and Medical Center Health Services, the College of Nursing Building is, is really taking off down there, if you haven't been by to see that.
Doug, can I ask a question while you're on that section?
Yes, sir.
What, what is the status of the parking garage around the corner here? I guess, my question, and, and I'm not trying to be-
Sure.
-critical or anything. How much do they like from finishing, and when is it going to be ready?
Well, no, that's, that's a good, good question, Commissioner Denning. The parking garage itself is 95% complete, but we, the elevators are just about finished. I am going to say, doesn't matter if I'm being recorded or not, it's a very independent company that's putting the elevators in, a very large conglomerate who just puts them in whenever they feel like it, and we've had a little issues there, so I'll, I'll say that, but I don't mind saying it, they're a little bitter, but that's, that's been very frustrating for us. But the third, fourth, or the fourth, fifth, the fourth and fifth floor are not open to the public because of fall hazards, that everything inside, everything inside is completed, but it will continue to be completed. The main structure, infrastructure of the parking structure was finished. Now that we're doing the, the wrap, now we're adding sprinkler and other, a carbon dioxide system to the parking structure because it will be fully wrapped and you have to have some ventilation, and so we'll continue to have construction done at the parking structure, but our goal is to have that entire block finished. We are hoping, and thank you for bringing that up, that was one of the next things, but we're hoping to bring something, with any luck, to the December 4th, I think that is your next meeting, or, is that right?
Yeah, post-Tuesday.
Some, at that meeting, hopefully a sub-developer agreement for the front side of Block 6, which will be apartments, and if we can get that taken care of, they will be finished by August of next year, and by August of next year, we would hope to have that entire block finished. The, of course, the wrap on the backside, the structure, everything will be done by May 1st, but the front side will be under construction for those apartments, and that will be done hopefully by August 1st, so by roughly nine, nine months from now, that entire block will be finished, so.
Was, was it in use the other night when Ronnie Dunn was here at Skypack?
Yes, sir. We, we've used, we, we've used the first three floors for every event downtown, it's been that. We've also, for like the International Festival and other community events, we've allowed parking in there for free as well, for community-based events as well, so we've had as many, we had a, one of the Skypack shows, we've, we've had 400 cars parked in there before, so that's, that's being used. We'd love to get it open as far as the elevator use, and that's where we're very, very close on finishing that up. So of course, there'll be two elevators for the parking structure, one basically at the Skypack end and one basically at the Hot Rods ticket office end, but there's other elevators being added because of what's going on the first floor, and the apartment complex will have an elevator as well, so there'll be four or five elevators in that facility when it's all said and done.
Do you mind, Doug, if we have Commissioner Denning be the first to ride those elevators to make sure they work okay?
Yeah, I'll check it out.
That'd be, that would be fine with me. We'd do ribbon cutting on the fifth floor, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's fine. If anyone would like to-
I'd be glad to do it.
And I do invite, in all seriousness, if you, if you would like to see what the view is from the fifth floor, I'd be happy to schedule that. It's spectacular, just to be quite honest with you, what that structure is going to be about, but that third, it's blocked off, so we can get access to it, to go up there and look at the fifth floor and see all the views of Bowling Green from up there. This is, of course, the wrong way. This right here is, is Hitsense Park Plaza, this is the ballpark side, and what you can see here is, of course, is, that would be cars on that fifth floor up there. What you do see, and this is what we're under, we're designing right now and working on, what you see here at the bottom is those restaurants on the first floor and this pedestrian walkway between the Hot Rod Stadium and the Park Plaza, and it's, so they're, they're feverishly working on that right now, but the initial drawings that I've seen are very, very impressive. It's going to be a destination place for not just ballparks and Skypack, but for other things, too, so we're pretty excited about that. They're working very hard on four or five restaurants to have those announcements soon. They're, they're working behind the scenes on that. The Mills LLC is in charge of all that, the boys at Hitsense, so they have had some great luck with a, a group of people designing and working on that, too, but I, I think we'll all be very, very pleased with what's going to happen there. Outdoor seating, just a great place to be there for live music and other things at the park there. This, this is BGMU, if you have not seen, this is, this is the, from the architecture, this is what the front of that building is going to look like, and I don't have a pointer with me right now, but you can see this red pickup truck here in the corner. You know, that's actually where the old BGMU building is right now, so what people I don't think realize is, when they get said and done, they're tearing down the old building and everything, and you'll, that, that, you'll see the whole front of that structure there, so a pretty impressive, pretty impressive building right there. That's the Alumni Center, which hopefully will be done by the end of January, and they're, they're already giving tours, but pretty impressive, too. This is the student housing I talked about, which is around the Block 12, the Alumni Square, parking garage, that parking garage is being managed by West Kentucky University. It's fully functional for not only parking for these residents, but also for special events, ballgames and everything, but this is the student housing that's around there, is there now. And then this is the rendition, if you haven't seen it, right on the, right on the bypass of the Medical Center Health Science Building, so pretty exciting, that's pretty exciting there. I've, I've said before, and I'll say it again, this project right here, as well as many of them, this is 100% because of the success of the TIF. There is no way this project would have been funded and no way it would have ever been built if we hadn't had the TIF, and so for those that wonder, is there really an effect of it, here's a perfect example right here, and this is going to generationally change healthcare in our community for, for many years to come, so I'm pretty excited about that. Be happy to answer any questions, I will give you two updates. Let me back up. I'll give you one, I mean, one, one of them, as soon as that camera goes, no, I'm kidding. We, I told you about, we'd like to come here December, December 4th meeting, we do have a sub-developer agreement in the works, signed, but we do want to bring that, of course, to the city commission for approval, we'll hopefully know by the first of next week for the December 4th meeting, and that'd be for the front side, and that developer wants to put 60 apartments on the front side of Block 6, and it's going to be a nicer amenity apartments, I don't know what they'll go for, but it'll be something to be very proud of. And our, our big challenge has always been, you know, getting more retail, getting more people to live, et cetera, and it's one more piece of the puzzle. With that going there and some other condo developments, you start to have more interest now in grocery stores and restaurants and the other types of business that we're negotiating with right now to come downtown, so there's going to be a lot of great, a lot more great announcements to come. Yes, sir?
Two things, Doug. The building of apartments that you were talking about just a few minutes ago, is that Butch, Butch Hutchinson?
No, sir.
And are you talking about the same place he was talking about?
Uh, no.
The web Chevrolet lot area there?
That, we're, we've been talking with him and a couple of other developers on a project there. This, the, the one I was talking about is the, is the group at the Columns and over management that's looking to, to do the, Alan Schubert, and they're going to build those apartments on the front side of Block 6 on College Street side. The one you're talking about, the old web Chevrolet, whatever, we have three or four developers we're dealing with right now to try to pin something down, and he is one of them. Yes.
The hotel at Western, is that Block 12?
Yes, sir.
Where, and I realized, I was talking to a hotel guy two or three weeks ago, I realized the hotel business borrowing money is pretty tight.
Right.
What, what is the status there?
We've, the status is, we are working with a developer right now on that project, and, and I can tell you in the four years that I've been involved, this is the farthest along we've been, and we feel very comfortable with the progress of bringing a hotel there.
Is this the same developer that was talked to on day one, or a different one?
No, it's a different one.
Okay.
I thought you were going to drag all the info out of me that I can't share right now.
Oh, no, no. You know I wouldn't do that.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You know I wouldn't do that.
It is a different developer, but we've, but it's a, it's a developer that's got a proven track record in the hotel industry, and so we're, we're working hard on that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
No, I have none.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Gorman, appreciate you sticking around.
Thank you.
See you later.
I'd like to say one thing, if I can.
Can we vote on that?
Private assistance. I appreciate the work of the, of the commission and the city staff and everything, of all the hard work they've done on the TIF, but I'd be remiss to say, and I, I don't mind telling you, if I wouldn't mention Commissioner Nash, he is the only commissioner in the city of Bowling Green that has voted for each and every part of the TIF since day one. He's probably not crazy about me bringing it up, but I will tell you, it's an easy thing right now to jump on board the TIF because of the success we've had, and I, and I, and we appreciate anyone at any time, it's a, it's a, it's been a, it's been a struggle, but I appreciate Commissioner Nash's leadership, and I appreciate his commitment to this project. This is something that obviously all of us can be extremely proud of and will be extremely proud of for generations to come, too, so Commissioner Nash, appreciate your support, appreciate the rest of your support, too. Thank you so much.
Do you have a tally on my vote?
Well, I actually do, I actually do.
Let's say you're betting less, betting less than 500.
That's why you're finding-
I wasn't, I just was saying, it's not, Joe, why would you even ask? The important vote was the Block 6, I appreciate that, so thank you all so much, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Hope you enjoy your calendar, Doug. Thank you.
You my buddy, Doug.
Mr. DeFebo, I think our next item is the biennial citizen survey for the city of Bowling Green.
Yes, as a democratic body, we're always trying to understand and hear what the people want from their city government. We do that by keeping our ear to the path and talking to people, have neighborhood strolls, listen to complaints, we even do surveys using WKU to make sure our various departments are doing a good job, and we even use Secret Shopper sometime to find out if we're doing a good job. About six and a half years ago, we used to use a man named Lyle Summick as a consultant to hold a, a series of focus groups, and we gave them dinner, and we hoped that they gave us information about what was important in our community, what they wanted from government. We found out, and as you may have found out by, through the various methods we used to find out what the people want, that it's very difficult to try to scientifically, without bias or without one side of the story, to find out what the people want. So for the last five and a half years or so, we've been part of a national citizen survey in which we use science to participate and endeavor with a number of other cities across the nation to try to listen to the people, and tonight, Kim is here to give you the results of that, and I think there, you should be very proud, I'll just give you one result. 91% of the people who live in this community who were surveyed would recommend the city of Bowling Green as a place for their friends to live. I, I don't think you'd get higher than that, so that's just one. After Kim gives her presentation, and you have deliberated, it's our intent to put this information on the website, both the good news and the challenges, share the information with the chamber, because I think they can use the good news for their marketing efforts, share with our partners at WKU, share with the county, BGMU, there's some good news about the Builders Association in here, and to generally share this so others can use it. Kim's had a difficult day, and I want to thank her for being here today to make this presentation.
Ms. Lancaster, go right ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, thank you guys for having me here. As Kevin said, I am going to be presenting the results of the third annual, or third biannual for this in survey. The first thing I want to do is give just a little bit of background about the process and how it works, and this does not work.
I so hoped it was just Doug.
Huh?
I so hoped it was really Doug that it might have worked.
No, I did, too. I assumed that would be the case. No, just to let you all know, the National Citizen Survey is a collaborative effort between the National Research Center and the ICMA. It focuses on community characteristics, government services, and issues of public trust. The survey and its administration are standardized to assert, to assure high quality, and also participating households are selected at random, and not only that, are the households selected at random, but then the survey within the household, the person with the most recent birthday is asked to fill out the survey to ensure that the selection of the person filling it out is random without bias as well. We do multiple mailings. Each time we do one of these citizen surveys, we will send out a postcard to start, a letter from our city manager, and then we send out the survey itself. If that survey does not get returned in a certain amount of time, we'll go ahead and send out one more survey to see if they'd like to fill it out, give them one more chance to do so. All of the results are statistically weighted to reflect the proper demographic composition of our community, and we receive a standard form from the NCS, and then we can make some changes, add some customized questions. This year, with some input from staff and some elected officials, we changed a few things up, and so then we have a bit of a personal take on the survey as a whole. And we also include some services that aren't directly provided by the city, such as our utilities, our library, or our transit, to kind of get an idea of how people feel about the community more as a whole. 1,200 questionnaires were mailed out, we had 93 undelivered and 267 were returned, which gave us a 24% response rate. Anything between 20 and 40% is statistically valid, so we are on the lower end, but we are still in the statistically valid range, and it does give us a slightly higher margin of error with a plus minus of 6%. Obviously, the higher your response rate, the lower your margin of error is going to be. And again, the data is statistically weighted to reflect community demographics, such as whether someone rents or whether someone owns. I want to take a look at kind of why we survey our immediate benefits. It provides useful information for planning, for resource allocation, for performance measurements, program and policy evaluation, and also some long-term benefits, such as improved services, more civic interg- civic engagement, better community quality of life, and stronger public trust. I just kind of want to briefly talk about, you know, how the, how the results need to be interpreted and compared. Nationally, public safety services tend to be rated higher than maybe transportation or road, road services, things of that nature, and we always need to try and compare Bowling Green services to other jurisdictions with the same service. We obviously don't want to be comparing our fire department to our police department. We want to compare our fire department to another fire department in a different jurisdiction. And in order for any comparison from a previous survey to be considered significant, we're looking at a plus minus of more than 8%. We do use benchmarks to do the survey and to measure what we get back. There is a database of 500 jurisdictions, it's a national database. We compare to that national database of 500, plus we also compare specifically to the southern region with populations from 35,000 to just under 70,000. We do that to kind of try and get a gauge of what people in cities our size in our region are thinking and doing versus maybe being compared to New York City, or, you know, Dallas, or something like that. This gives us a little bit better idea of how we fare. idea of how we fare. These first couple of slides I want to go over are comparison strictly us over the last three, or over the last three surveys. The overall quality of life in Bowling Green, you can see the lower one there, 82% in 2008. Seventy-seven percent of folks rated us as good or excellent in 2010, and then 81% in this year. So again, that plus minus is not necessarily significant. We are staying pretty stable with that. Your neighborhood is a place to live, 65, 67, and 70. And Bowling Green is a place to live, 87, 81, and 88. So again, all of those numbers are pretty stable, and we're looking good in 2012 for Just a couple more. People who rated likely or somewhat likely to recommend Bowling Green to come here and live, 86, 83, and 91% this year, as Mr. DeFebbe said. Those who plan on remaining in Bowling Green for the next five years, we've done 80%, 77, and 79, are very likely or somewhat likely to stay here in Bowling Green. So what I want to do on my next couple of slides, I'm going to give some percentages again of, of kind of our rankings and what we've got. And then I'm going to compare them to the benchmark. So you guys can get a gauge of not only what our citizens think, but then you can see how it compares both the national and the southern region. I'm going to just go through these really briefly. Quality of life, some of these were on the previous slides. People who rated us as excellent or good as a place to live, 88%. Your neighborhood, 70%. A place to raise children, 79. A place to work and retire, both got 65. And the overall quality of life is 81. Now here's where you can kind of see where we're falling in line with the rest of the cities. On the left-hand column, we have the national comparison. On the right-hand column, we're always going to have the southern region. You can see that we are below in one category in the national comparison, as your neighborhood is a place to live. Everything else is going to be similar above, or even much above, the southern region as a place to raise children and as a place to work. So, you know, that's definitely favorable for us. Services that we provide. The percent that are rated as excellent or good, our police services are at 74%. Fire is at 90. Street repairs, we take a dip down to 35%. Street cleaning, 56. Lighting, 61. Snow removal, 70. Sidewalk and storm drainage at 57 and 56. But again, if you take a look at that, street repair, which was low, both have below. But even some of the other lower numbers are ranking similar to other communities. So we know that everyone seems to be getting those rankings. And then in situations like snow removal, we're above and much above. And in street lighting for the southern region, we're also above. Everything else seems pretty much similar to both the southern jurisdictions and the national comparison. Please feel free to stop me if you guys have any questions at any point. Some more services that we provide, our parks were ranked at 84%. Recreation at 68. Centers at 76. Our code enforcement was at 51%. Animal control at 59, and public information services at 72. And then when we look at the comparisons again, we see that our parks are ranking above both the national and the southern region. We are similar with everything else, except for public information services in the southern region only is ranked at above. Some community characteristics. The appearance of Bowling Green gets a 77% as excellent or good. Recreational opportunities at 63. Volunteer opportunities, 76. Employment at 46%. But interesting enough, on the next slide, we'll see that that's actually very good. Opportunities to participate in community, 62. Ease of walking in Bowling Green, 47. And cleanliness at 75. And again, when you take a look, we are much above in both categories for employment, even with what seemed to be a relatively low number. Above with our overall appearance, similar with recreation. Above with volunteer abilities. Similar with community matters. Again, with ease of walking in Bowling Green, we are much below in one category and below in the other. So obviously, that might be something we want to take a look at in the future. Cleanliness of Bowling Green is similar and above.
Kim?
Yes?
Go back. The ease of walking in Bowling Green, what did that entail? Do you know?
Just walkability in general. Sidewalks, ability to get to a store, you know, I, I think, obviously, we're much below from the national comparison, because you're looking at a bunch, much larger cities, where your walkability is going to be much stronger than it is to our side. But even when comparing to smaller populations, we're still looking at a below ranking on that. Some more. This follows up to what you were asking, Joe. The availability of paths and walking trails. We ranked 39% as excellent or good. Our traffic flow is at 28%. And again, you know, this survey is not necessa- not necessarily taking into consideration specifically city roads. Those people are going to be basing that off state roads, county roads, city roads, all of them. Overall image or reputation, 73. Sense of community at 71. Educational opportunities at 74, and variety of housing at 60. And again, as before, our traffic flow and our availability of paths is below and much below in those categories. Something else, again, we're probably going to want to maybe take a look at based on this survey. Our reputation as a whole is above in both comparisons. Our sense of community is above. Our educational opportunities are much above, both national and southern, which is great. And our housing options are similar. Briefly going to take a look at safety. Folks are asked how, how safe they feel in different situations. And this is those who rated the situation as very or somewhat safe. In your neighborhood during the day, 94% felt very or somewhat safe. After dark, 73%. Violent crimes, 76. Safety from property crimes, 62. Safety in downtown Bowling Green during the day at 89, and 61% after dark. And you can see that for the national comparison, we're similar in every category. For the southern region, when comparing ourselves with more like-sized cities, we're looking at much above and above in every other category, except property crimes, which is similar. So there's definitely a feel that the citizens who live here in Bowling Green have a safe feeling about our community, which I think is, is outstanding. So I guess just kind of in review, some areas for improvement. Some of these were in the slides. Some of them are just from the survey that have been pulled out. You know, we're looking at ease of car travel, street repair, garbage collection, traffic flow, yard waste, preventative health services, affordable childcare, and citizens attending local meetings. Those are all some of our areas where we ranked below the average. And again, some of these things, we have a direct hand in, some of them we have an indirect hand. So needs to be taken into consideration what we can do to help improve some of these areas. And on the other side of that, we have places where we're excelling. And, you know, I think it's great that in a lot of the overall community areas, we seem to be excelling. It's a place people want to raise kids. They like our snow removal. People like the appearance of Bowling Green. The employment opportunities are good. The economic development is good. They think Bowling Green is a clean place. They like our city parks. They're happy with our services to low-income people, and they're happy with the public information services and the information that they're getting. So these are some areas that I think, you know, I want to make special note of where we're excelling and where we're doing well. That's the majority of the information I've got in this. Again, you all have the survey in its entirety. It is on our website for anyone else who wants to view it. So we're looking at, what I've put in here are some of what I picked as the more important issues to take a look at. There are many more things in this survey, so please feel free to review it, and our citizens to review it. If anyone has any questions, they are more than welcome to contact me, and I will go through any information that I can with them.
Any questions for Ms. Lancaster? Yes, sir.
Do you have the ability, you said, to tweak the survey from year to year?
Yes.
A little bit?
Yes.
Is there any, have we in the past taken the areas for improvement and tried to tweak them to define more accurately what people's issue is? For example, if we were talking about yard waste pickup, is there a way in that, since we know that's an issue, is there a way in that question to break it down as to, are we talking about leaf collection? Or are we talking about the piles of sticks that Scott Waste is responsible for picking up?
I'm not sure if we can get that specific in the core of the survey. We do have the ability. We choose an option to do three personalized questions. And so we try to get some specific answers on a few things during those questions. I believe there would be an add-on if we spent more money in order to get more personalized questions, where we could maybe try and do some follow-up. You can also do open-ended questions if you'd like to. It's just adding additional things onto the survey.
Because I would see, you know, and I understand, it may take more money, and that's somebody else's decision to make. But traffic flow on major streets, what I'd like to know is list the top three streets.
Yes.
That you think traffic doesn't flow properly on. And that way, we know if we need to share this with the county, the state, or ourselves.
Yes. And that is all possible, again, at a, at a much higher price tag.
Okay. Thank you.
My only comment is, I'm glad that we do this. I think it gives us a good basis and, and obviously, some things to work on. But it's also nice to see things where we excel at.
If I can comment, it's also interesting to note that we've already presaged what the priorities are by putting our money where our mouth is, because we put it in sidewalks, streets, stormwater. That's our top three priorities, and that has been identified, I think, is the area. It's really, I think it's a good endorsement of the community. And what Kim also didn't mention, but there's a whole trust thing, and the people trust you, right? That came pretty clear from the survey. We didn't mention that as a thing here, but you should know that. It's in the survey. So that's important.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work we did on it. That's the last item we have on the work session, unless one of the commissioners have an issue they'd like to bring up. Hearing none, we'll return for our regular session at 7 o'clock. Thanks for tuning in.